Welcome, it's nice to have everybody here. And Tiffany, you have roll call completed?
Yes, I am.
She's remote tonight, so we'll hear this voice guide, that's good. Okay, we saw that the Board of Education approved the agenda for the June 3rd, 2024 Regular Board of Education meeting. So Luke? Don? Luke? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And now, we'll start right off with the highlight of the meeting. And we'll do our spotlight. We'll recognize some students and staff for their outstanding achievements and accomplishments. Dr. Farber and Jeremy?
Thank you. We're gonna actually first start this evening by recognizing our Ray News cast and crew. And before I call them up and say a little bit about what they're gonna recognize this evening for, we're gonna watch a short video of their create. So I'm gonna have Mrs. Bradney and I...
To any visitor, this area behind me appears to be just a bunch of scrub brush and some future two-by-fours. The agriculture community middle school thinks otherwise. Today, we're diving headfirst into the delicious world of homemade maple syrup. So strap in, because I've got the inside scoop on the sweetest segment of the whole school year.
Meet Mr. Matthew Bradney, lead advisor of the Agriculture Club and lead maple syrup enthusiasts at Ray Middle School.
There's not a lot of other schools that do this type of thing. Even the smaller, more rural schools in the area don't have a maple syrup program. So I'd say what makes it special is that we're almost one of a kind in our region.
Making maple syrup is a labor-intensive process, and the agriculture college students seem to accept that challenge head-on.
Well, first, we go onto the woods and we have to drill a few holes in the tree and put sap in them so we can then get the sap out of the trees.
It was like the big rush of energy, you got to use some power tools, get the drill through a tree saw. I mean, every day, who gets the drill inside of a tree?
After the trees are tapped, the real work begins. Agriculture college students need to put the sap daily to bring the inside of the school in order for it to be put through the reverse osmosis system.
When we pump it into our reverse osmosis membranes, how that works is that pressure forces that sap through the membrane where it separates it and concentrate, permeate. Concentrate would be our sap that we wanna take and boil down. Permeate would be the water that we're getting rid of.
While the extra water in the concentrated solution gets boiled off when we heat the sap to 217.5 degrees Fahrenheit. Once the target numbers are reached, that magical moment happens where the sap transforms into syrup.
My favorite part of making the maple syrup is being able to just pour it, seeing how good it looks, smelling it. It smells just very sweet and it's a nice warm smell.
Uh, my mom made French toast for us, uh, and I got to pour all of it, all of the French toast. It was really good, it was really sweet.
I did a comparison versus the Costco and the homemade. And the homemade was so much more, I guess, powerful in its taste.
It was nice to get out with the kids and bring them outside and have them be a part of the process of something that's totally natural and something that they can do at home with the right resources.
Oh, I think getting kids at school, getting them this opportunity to make their own syrup is a really good thing.
Who knew that making homemade maple syrup was one big science experiment? The tastiest science experiment ever. Thanks for Agriculture Club!
Well, certainly it was interesting learning about the Agriculture Club, that's why we're here. We're here this evening to recognize the Ray News cast and crew. They won first place in the middle school feature story category at Student Television Network 2024 Spraying Nationals. And so I'm gonna ask Mr. Bradney to come on. That will be the Ray Middle School library specialist and services to the advisors to this group. And I'm gonna actually have you read through and show off the students one by one, and we'll have a picture here. Congratulations to all of our Ray Newsers.
Thanks, everybody. And thank you to the Agriculture Club for coming up with the idea of that and remembering the story. You need a good story. Our students, they just organized alphabetics, so they're gonna list. Chris is the one. Chris is the one. Trey is the one. Alexis is the one. Sydney is the one. Anna is the one. Julian is the one. Farrah is the one. White is the one. Michelle is the one. Ava is the one. Eva is the one. And Karen is the one.
Parents, well, we're getting a picture. If anybody wants to come on up, come on up in the front and take a picture with your own cell phone.
While they're ready for the picture, I will say, I know I'm super excited to see now the end result of these students making their way through dirty and baker. We have an outstanding visual film program at the high school, and it's great to see what they're able to produce based on what we just saw here in this video. Exciting things are assured to come for our high school students, these students moving their way through our system. How about one more round of applause for our Ray Newsers. Next on our student spotlight, we're excited to recognize our varsity Eagles Platoon Esports team. And so I know we have our student coaches here, so Lindsay Siskeri and Tom Littich, if you could come on. The varsity Eagles Platoon Esports team won the PLDS Northeastern Championship in the UCL. They swept their opponent in the Platoon Championships. Congratulations to the following students. Junior Nolan Castellino. Junior Andrew Lusrellier. Sophomore Sawyer Rujin. And freshman William Lusrellier.
Tell them what the game is.
I'm gonna have the captain, the team captain, explain how they compete and what they were competing in and what game they were competing in.
Um, so we play, um, we're a Platoon team, obviously. So it's kind of, it's kind of like a church game, but it's kind of, you know, we're, we're a church school. We, uh, you know, it's been a great, we've been there for a couple of years. We play against teams, you know, and I heard we played all over the Northeast, uh, but, yeah, it was a great season, just being able to grow their team. But, yeah, they did very good.
We're gonna now transition to our staff spotlight. For our staff spotlight this evening, we are choosing to recognize what were probably the unsung heroes within our refrigerator who play a critical role in making sure that our students, our staff, everyone they can function successfully each and every day. And so tonight, we're gonna be thanking to all of our transportation department, our facilities, which includes maintenance, grounds, storage, staff members, our health services, and our food service department. And we'll start first with transportation, and then I have Cory come on. Cory is on the agenda tonight to be a member of our Assistant School Transportation Director. He's representing our internal school. So we think that our transportation department plays an important role in making sure our students arrive safely to and from school each day. These staff members navigate through traffic, weather, and other unpredictable obstacles. As a team, this department has overcome challenges due to shortages as bus drivers, and they have done so with professionalism and patience. And I can see me too, having allowed these to drive a big bus out of the head, made a couple suburban trips due to the shortages of hydro, how stressful it is, and I wasn't able to transport one student. So thank you for your commitment to our student safety. Thank you for providing comfort and care to our students and their families. And thank you for your dedication and commitment to our goal, to your role in the transportation department. You are all certainly invaluable members of our school community. And so with that, we have a certificate here, so I know there's a few transportation employees in the audience, if you'd like to come up and get in the picture too, we love you.
Um, if you could go to the center of the group and hold up the award, and then everyone kind of go around you.
Sure.
Put the baby up front, okay? And then it's going around. Swing it from the front somewhere. Okay, you're me? No, you're, you're, okay. Okay, first.
Smile, everybody. Smile, baby.
I'm gonna ask our Chief Officer, Chief Officer Rick Ford, to come up please. And I believe our Assistant Director of Facilities is also here, Chris Bradney. So we're recognizing our facilities department, which includes hardworking and dedicated staff members who are part of our maintenance, grounds, and storage crews. One of the compliments I often hear most visitors and community members is how beautiful our fields, our main campus, and our school buildings are. And I honestly have to say, I agree 100%. They do a great job each and every day, make our facilities look like they look, and prepared for students as they come each morning. The attention detail and the effort that is put into making and keeping our facilities clean, safe, and running well is outstanding. Facility staff members are dedicated to providing a clean and safe environment for our students to learn and thrive. Thank you for going above and beyond for every student, staff member, and community member. And so, congratulations to all of the other facilities hosts. And now, come on. Chipping down to health services. Katie, our supervisor, our school nurse, Katie Lee. So from spraining bees and stomachaches to serious medical conditions and emergencies, our school nurses play a vital role in keeping our students safe and providing a sense of security to our families. Thank you for your passion, support, and patience, your care and comfort that has impact on our students in many ways. Thank you for all the duty to protect and to advocate for our students' health. You are all very much appreciated. Thank you. One of our school nurses, my review. Last but certainly not least, we've got our food services department, and I'll have Donna Rice, our school lunch director, come on. The most hard-to-getting those food service staff took on a challenge this year of switching midstream, mid-year to offer free meals for all students given the generosity of our government and the ability to be a part of that program. They handled it with patience, professionalism, and positive attitude. This staff works harder to feed more than 2,500 students each day, dedicated to serving nutritious meals as breakfasts and lunch. You are all considered real heroes, many of our students. Thank you for all the duty. Your hard work as a school employee, and you make our schools a better place, Katie. Thank you. And in food services, Cory? Okay, we have one final spotlight. We've done this a few times this school year, called the Bradyer Spotlight. And that's when somebody's got to go above and beyond to really help somebody in need, and that's what happened recently. So I'd like to have one of our school bus drivers, Destiny Patrick, come on. We are recognizing her for her great spotlight this evening because she discovered that a four-year-old was walking alone in the middle earlier this month. Destiny's professionalism and passion during the incident is considered commendable, and we're grateful that she was there to help this child. This veteran, Cory, nominated Destiny to receive this recognition. Cory said that following, the following went up about Destiny. Not only was she observed, but she took the time to call it in and waited for a busload of students so we could provide relief. She was calm and handled the situation perfectly. With all the ongoing situations that are in our world today, it's comforting that we had a driver notice, took time to care of this student. This isn't the unit of all of us, but we'll leave it somewhere. So Destiny, thank you so much for picking that ingredient and doing the right thing and supporting this child.
Thank you all. Well, again, congratulations to the students and thank you to the staff for all your support on caring for our students in Baldysville. And also, thank you to all the parents, the guardians, the relatives who support these children in their endeavors. Now, we are gonna start the business portion of the meeting. So if you have other things that might be equally important, feel free to go do those things. Well, you're always welcome to complain. Of course, bonds for activities. So I know that, uh, all of us have had meetings, I believe that we can talk about that. We did have, uh, we were intrigued to do some type of, uh, York, or something, uh, some, uh, we had a, uh, that was, uh, that was, uh, 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 uh. We also had the CNY School Association dinner at, uh, May 22nd last Wednesday, oh, two weeks ago. It was a march. But I'd say the person had that. I, I will say that, uh, CNY did a nice job. They, uh, had a couple of speakers and gave us some words of distinction. But the most memorable piece for me was that they had a table board for every table, and they had fortune cookies. And it just so happened, my fortune cookie said, "You have a door gift in your future." So I did. Then, uh, we did tonight, already have an audit committee meeting, and I don't want to hold it any longer, because I want Kirsty's dying to report on it.
Yeah, I'm a newbie, so I got elected to report on the audit committee, but we had a great meeting. We started with a review of the charter for the committee, so that was, uh, a good thing to start with. And then we, um, had an extensive financial review, uh, from, let me just, I'm not sure I get the, uh, from MMB and Company. Uh, and then we had our internal, uh, review by our internal auditors, and that was, um, they pick out, um, one area to review extensively, I guess, each time. And, uh, this time it was an extensive review of our IT systems. So, um, there are, there were a few recommendations, nothing serious, uh, just, um, just to get better than we are right now. So, um, Joe and his team will be making those improvements, and, uh, on the July 1st reorg meeting, we'll approve their, their plans, uh, for those IT systems. We approved a new, uh, community member for the, um, uh, for the audit committee and approved having, uh, the potential for a second member on the audit committee, and discussed that perhaps that person should have some IT background, since those kinds of things change so frequently and are updated so frequently. And we're, we were in a really good place with, um, financial expertise from the community, but we thought maybe they should add, um, some IT expertise, uh, from the community as well. So we'll put another, a call to see if anyone might be interested in sort of, um, uh, I don't know if any, there were, Sam was there, Tom was there, Andy, that, I'm not sure.
I did kind of skip over a very important item, I guess. On May 21st was the, uh, bu- budget vote and board elections, and I want to congratulate the members of the board. All incumbents were reelected, so congratulations. And also, I want to thank them, because I noticed that within 48 hours, I couldn't see any of your signs anywhere. Which is equally important, I think, to put that down. Well, thank you. And most of all, again, our community came out and supported the schools. This community is amazing with its support of the schools, but that's the way you have a good school, is you have a good community that supports the schools. But thank you very much to each and every vote that turned out, so.
Vic, just in addition to that, would the, um, the exit survey, the exit poll?
Thank you.
Just want to thank the community for those, there was just around 70, um, individuals that participated in the exit survey. Certainly, we'll do what we can next year to get that out there even more so than we did this year, but it is more than we've ever had. It's part of an exit survey. Hopefully, they've done the ease with the QR code, um, simple, and we've gotten a lot of great feedback. So for those that didn't participate in that exit survey, we asked, um, you know, how they voted on the proposed budget, how they voted on the proposition two, how they voted on proposition three, what maybe influenced their decision in voting the way that they did, how did they best get their information and resources, and what other suggestions or strategies, uh, do you have for continuing to improve and enhance our district? And so we've received a lot of positive feedback, um, feedback, constructive feedback that would be helpful, uh, as we move forward and make decisions, especially around zero emissions and other district priorities. So again, thank you to the community for taking time to participate in that exit poll.
Yes, and those, those results have already been forwarded to the board, and we will have more discussions on them. So thank you to all of them, everyone. And then, also, early this evening, we had a retiree reception, and, uh, many of our retirees attended, and it's amazing, anywhere from, what? Some hadn't been here too long, but some were 36 years, and a lot of them were high twenties. So we did greatly appreciate the care, the motivation, and the inspiration they provided to students of Baldysville for years, and we wish them the best in the next phase of their life. So moving to the future, um, anything, there's a few things coming up, most notably, I guess, graduation on Saturday, June 22nd. But anything else from anybody that, that they've attended or, or note?
I was able to attend the mock DWI last week, and it was very powerful. And I think it's something that people does every year, but they need to continue to do it. But it had an impact on me, and I can only imagine the impact it had on our students.
Yeah, that's a good point. Also, the senior ball... Also, the senior ball was Saturday night, and I probably, I'm not saying another word because the next report will probably be on that. So anything else, anybody? Okay, Maya.
All right, so this is my last report, so try to make it a good one. So the senior art show went amazing. All of the work was done beautifully. Three students were awarded scholarships. The Save the Life was also for juniors. Every junior was able to participate. I believe very formally, so Anals Angels in honor of the Palmer students, Mariella and Alyssa. The Anals World President, and I heard that it was an amazing thing. The mock DWI for seniors was broadcast in auditorium. Chief, sorry if I butchered this, Lefy Jack gave a wonderful speech towards the end. Students were amazing regarding the deal, seriously. Ball was June 1st, and it was amazing. It was very fun. KBR was also done beautifully. You find out I'm not very good at blackjack. This week gives the recognition of students for CSF and other community scholarships. Close to $200,000 will be awarded at Movement Up Day, June 5th. The athletic awards ceremony and hall of fame induction ceremony will be this Thursday. Caps and gowns will be given on June 11th, and it is the senior ball at our elementaries. The senior picnic is June 12th, and graduation rehearsal is on June 13th. And then everybody will be graduating June 22nd.
And Maya, thank you, and we appreciate all your input this year, so thank you very much.
I'm so hopeful that she's going to be here on June 17th. We do have an outgoing gift for all board members. It's the official last meeting on the 17th, so five, five? We'll celebrate one last time.
Yeah, you mentioned that, but you talked about the scholarship night. It is the 50th anniversary, I believe, scholarship. And with the number they've given away, over $2.3 million, I believe is the number, so. Very impressive. Again, thank you to EVO community. Okay, next, it's our public participation. We do appreciate hearing from speakers. We do ask that we limit your comments to three minutes. And we do appreciate hearing about new things and hearing your input. So we do have, I know, two speakers tonight, and the first is Steve Young.
Hi. Good evening. First, I'd like to congratulate the recently elected board members. Secondly, I'd like to thank those who fixed the video link. We both did big work. At the last meeting, we received a letter from the board recommending that we schedule a meeting with the superintendent directly to be given clarity on the matters we've been speaking about regarding the free admission because equity mentality. All the questions and comments we've made here have been in the public forum, and they should be answered in the public forum. Requesting a one-on-one meeting, I don't think it's a responsible means by which to provide answers or clarity when the inquiry is made by the public for the public. That being said, we did go to the meeting as a show of sincerity that we are opposed to the free because equity mentality driving the administration's decision-making. The only argument to support the free administration, or free admission because equity continues to be the word equity. We were told that our question about the guiding principle has been answered. It's just not the answer we want to hear. We were told the guiding principle is written on the main page. While I've read the mission and vision and the strategic plan, and in those documents, the word equity is mentioned several times along with some other words and statements that we'll deal with in meetings to come. It does not, however, speak to granting the power to the administration to unilaterally pass down policy that removes an extracurricular activity's most powerful fundraising ability to achieve that equity. So we disagree. But at the heart of the administration is that the community needs this. So we proposed that the community be given their opportunity to speak on the matter by way of standalone proposition that we can vote on. The response to that was, that's not going to happen. But why not? How is it different than a budget vote or a vote on an EV bus? A moment ago, I used the word "power," "power" being an interesting word. The pursuit of equity requires power to tip the scales to achieve the desired outcome and result in inconsistency. This case being a glaring example. If you'll remember, the several board members asked, "Why is this the first we're hearing about this when I brought up the subject of free admission paid for by taxpayer dollars from the general fund back in the first meeting?" This is, in my opinion, the administration seeking power by not including board members on budgetary matter. We asked if we could booster plug and charge admission fee. The key points to that response were, no one ever said we can't charge admission. We're working on it with the director and coordinator to take that back to the New York State Marching Band Association to see if they can look at things differently. And I'm not going to let you paint me into a corner. Well, I want to know where's the clarity in that? In my opinion, this is an attempt to retain power through vague, unclear, non-transparent question dogging. So we asked for a vote. Administration says it's not going to happen. This is an attempt to retain power by denying community involvement. We were told that this was two years in the making, and we just had a budget vote. And I didn't see a line item for the arts, 1.6 million to athletics, but nothing for the arts despite a, we're going to be the first fundamental shift. So you either missed a big one, or that means that the budgetary money is at the administration's discretion. So that's power over money with no transparency for the public. The strategic plan under the collective values and beliefs asks the question, "How must we behave?" And it states, "All members of the Ballensville community, including students, parents, teachers, support professionals, administrators, community groups, and the Board of Education, share the following values," and it goes on from there. But that's the central statement. Well, I can get behind about 90% of what's written in. What I cannot get behind is a vague statement that demands that we all share the same beliefs when those beliefs give rise to unilateral power seeking, unclear, non-transparent policy that forsakes those that are our number one priority, and that's the students. There's one, it's the end of my speech, but I just got one other thing.
I would ask you to please be respectful of the time.
This is my ID. I will not be pursuing my position as set construction anymore. I'm going to be returning back to a volunteer basis. And I believe that that will open up the door for me to pursue things from different angles. I appreciate your time.
Okay, our seventh speaker is in order to vote.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to address you today. I'm here before you once again as a dedicated parent and community member, deeply concerned about the decision to eliminate admission charges for school events. As you just heard, we were told by administration that the decision was driven by the district's strategic plan. I have some working knowledge in the process as I have worked with the district that I'm employed with in their strategic planning process. And I know it involves developing specific measurables, action steps to meet the goals identified by the process. After reviewing Ballensville's plan, I failed to find support for eliminating admission charges for school events. This decision has significant unintended consequences. I pulled a few of the goals to speak about. First being, creating a communication plan partnership of families, higher education, business, community organizations, and ER courses to enhance student programming that will meet the demands of the local and global marketplace. Meet the demands of the local and global marketplace should include the arts. There are few opportunities in the district which gives students as realistic a window into an industry as our theater arts program. Without ticket sales, it is relegated to a community service performed for whomever is fast enough to reserve seats. Create an environment where all students, staff, and families feel a sense of belonging. Our theater arts programs are offered without cost to students, as they should be. Goal, to prepare students to be knowledgeable, critical thinkers, communicators, collaborators, creators, and contributors. Removing the financial component of the theater program restricts the learning opportunities for our students. Ensure continued access to state-of-the-art technology, systems, products, and programs that will allow students to compete in the college and career-ready occupations. A robust theater program certainly adds to students' skills for college and careers. But the more I explore this issue, the more I am finding it difficult to define a policy being implemented at all. If it is to eliminate charges to school events, why is there an admission charge for the freshman dance that my daughter just attended? Why was there admission charge for flag football sectionals? How about prom or ball? How about ski club? Is it about who sponsors the event? For example, an extracurricular activity versus a school district. But what has really piqued my curiosity is why does arts and education finally get brought up in the conversations about our theater arts program? When I asked about that, it became clear that obtaining such funding to support the theater program would only be possible if there were no charges for admission. So is this about getting another revenue source for the school? Ultimately, the district's strategic plan is just that, a plan. It is not appropriate to use the admirable sentiments laid out in the mission, vision, and core belief section as a blank check. The strategic plan emphasizes fostering an environment that educates and empowers all students to become global citizens of tomorrow. It stresses the importance of creating optimal educational experiences, ensuring fine fiscal responsibility, and maintaining ongoing communication between all stakeholders. I don't believe it is the visions of war that the activities of the arts programs in Ballensville are simply free entertainment for the community, thus denying our students the opportunity to learn about what it takes to present a product that people aren't happy to pay for, and deny the community the opportunity to support and invest in our students' achievements, fostering a sense of shared responsibility and pride. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Then we'll move on to our consent agenda. Resolve the Board of Education approved consent agenda pursuant to be attached. Don? Andrew? So there's a number of things on here, although pretty standard, I think, everybody reviewed the personnel piece. Any questions on that? Okay. And of course, we have the standard, the financials. I don't, hearing no discussion, I think we can go ahead and vote. Those in favor? Those opposed? Motion carries. And yes, we want to congratulate Cory on her new position. We appreciate your hard work getting there, and we look forward to the new ideas and the hard work you'll bring to the position. So thank you. Number nine is our policy review. This is the first reading, so there'll be no voting, but I guess looking down here, is there any discussion or questions on these policies? And I will compliment Joe and the policy committee because we had set a goal of reviewing all policies every year. And this is the first year that goal's still been accomplished, I believe, correct? So, policy committee, whoever you are, go on. It's kind of special because lots of times, new people are on the policy committee. It gives you, give you a great exposure, I guess. Any questions, discussions on that?
I'd like to just add that assumption. Excellent, that we were able to eliminate the policies that are already state mandates and pare that down to something that's somewhat mandatory. And the entire committee had some brief discussions throughout the year. And we all got on the same page and were able to review everything, as Dick said, as hasn't been done in quite a few years.
Thank you. Okay, moving on to nine B. It's resolve the Board of Education approved the award of truck bid number 401 pursuant to be attached. Kristy? Tom? Okay, we can all read this, but this is, Tiffany, this went to the lowest bidder, who we've noted to be a good bidder and provide what's requested, right?
Yes, that is correct.
Okay. Well, I don't expect any discussion.
Just a quick question. I think we may have had something like this closer to mid last summer. I just kind of had the same question. Is there any information, do we know anything about why this was, this company was the sole bidder on this?
Up to the per tiffany, I think, on that one.
Yes. Yeah, so we, we conducted a mini bid with New York State last summer, and the truck that was being provided to that bid was not, was not going to be a good fit for our transportation department. So we, in wanting to acquire the correct vehicle within the school year, we conducted a local bid. And there was a local company that actually had the truck in stock that, it's a specific truck. It's a shop truck for the transportation department. And they were the sole bidder because they did have the vehicle in stock.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, good question. Anything, any other discussion questions? Those in favor? Those opposed? Motion carries. Nine C. Resolve the Board of Education approved the Ballensville Central School District's Professional Learning Plan for the period July 1, 2023 through July 30, 2026 pursuant to be attached. Thank you, Kristy. Jeremy?
Just a correction, I should say July, we can have Tiffany, she said July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2027.
Thank you. Let me rephrase that then, so it's July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2026. In other words, a two-year plan, right?
It should be three years, July 1, 2024 through June 30.
Oh, second, I'm sorry, June 30. Guess it's a good thing it's not bad, right? Okay. May you want to just give us a brief explanation? I know this is a regular thing, but what is different about this?
Yeah, so New York State requires that every district have a professional development or professional learning plan. And in the plan, it outlines the people that are on the committee. And we do have a professional learning committee that is comprised of teachers, support staff, administrators, union representatives. So for this particular plan, that's, we've updated some of the membership names because people have either retired or, you know, sometimes they're like, I can't serve on the committee for next year. And so we find a replacement. And it basically just outlines some of our professional learning opportunities that we provide over the course of the school year.
Yeah, we did have all those names, it's a very robust committee, a lot of diversity, a lot of experience, so that's great. Okay, thank you. Any other discussion questions? Those in favor? Those opposed? Motion carries. Nine D. Resolve the Board of Education approve the district's universal pre-K plan for the 2024-2025 school year pursuant to be attached. Sam? And Luke? This is good news here, right? Because we're now covering, you want to just go over that?
Absolutely. We'll talk a little bit more under the board roundtable about how this program has grown and the funding that we are receiving. In this proposed 24-25 calendar year, or school year, we are looking to actually add two community partners. We had a community partner two years ago, so that's going to create two additional classrooms. And so we're able to service more students next year than we've ever serviced in the universal pre-K program. And that's thanks to additional funding from New York State, but then also the community's interest and our families willing to send their kids to our program. interest and our families willing to send their kids to our program.
That's great. And I expect probably in the near future, we'll be hearing some of the results of the UPK program. But we'll be up to a little over 250 next year, I guess.
Correct, you're going to see in a little bit, the numbers may have projected, so.
Sorry, I'll say that.
For sure.
Okay. Any other questions, discussion?
Not anything, but I don't know that we're able to not only offer, but expand the pre-K program to the community, especially as we focus more on the restructuring and expansion of our community, whereas the board seen a future, so I think it's a vital piece in the puzzle, and I think we have a absolutely outstanding program, and we're happy to see us grow.
Thank you. And Tom, I suppose as an education professional, you would say that UPK is a great.
I completely agree with Luke, I think it's, it's an essential first step, and the fact that Bolwensville is dedicated, is energy and time and the plan, and to be purposeful about this, I think it will bear for success now and in the future, so.
Right. Thank you. Any other discussion? Proceed to vote, those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And now, Resolve the Board of Education approve the bond resolution for purchase authorization for internal combustion to transportation vehicles in the Bolwensville Central School District pursuant to be attached.
So who?
Andrew? Wayne? And anything like a bond is a roll call vote, so.
Uh, just a quick question for Tiffany, do you know what the actual final count was on this bill account?
Uh, I can go back to.
I, I, we did.
No, no, it was on the agenda.
Very similar to the budget vote.
Except for some.
Very similar to the budget vote.
Okay.
There was two.
Thank you.
So Tiffany, are you ready for the roll call?
Yes, just one more. Okay. Okay. Tom's call?
Should I say aye or yes? Either one. Aye.
Okay, Jeremy Callie?
Aye.
Wayne Davidson Jr.?
Aye.
Luke Kaczowski?
Aye.
Andrew Henty?
Aye.
Victor Jenkins?
Aye.
Donald Miller?
Aye.
Christina Pobello?
Aye.
Sherry Shaden?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tiffany, both motion carries. Uh, and just by way of explanation, so we get approximately 81% aid on these buses, and they have roughly a 10-year lifespan, that is correct? And, well, too bad Cory's not here, he could probably tell us this, but I know they have very, very high mileage by the time we retire them, but the bus cycle we're on is extremely important because the buses we will be retiring now become maintenance headaches, and the maintenance is all paid by the local school district, whereas when we buy new buses that we start again, that is 81% aid. So financially, it's extremely important to keep this rotation so your bus doesn't get too old when you're spending lots of money in paying. This is, then, I know Tiffany and Kim before her established a very, very good rotation. Again, we appreciate the community keeping up, although it is by far in their best interest to do something, so.
What do we do with these buses when they, according to OAT, we auction them off? Once there's surplus, so they'll be on a surplus list for the board at a future meeting, and we will set them on the way.
Okay, ready for nine F? Resolve the Board of Education approve the resolution for architecture engineering services for the 2024, 2025 capital outlay project pursuant to be attached.
Who?
Wayne? Tom? And just any, any questions? This is appointed King as our ongoing forum. We've worked with them for many years and are very happy with them. Any other questions or discussions here? Okay. Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And nine, nine G. Resolve the Board of Education approve the fourth grade course revisions for Algebra I and Geometry pursuant to be attached. Sam? Kristi? And I see Renee, if you're ready?
Yep.
Thank you.
Yeah, so this is just a formality, really, just to notify the board that new standards are occurring in these two courses. Actually, um, Algebra was new standards all of this year. As a matter of fact, our students will be taking the new Algebra exam tomorrow at 9:15, and they're all going to go home and get a really good night's sleep, and be ready for that. So, and Geometry will start in the fall, and then there'll be two more that you'll see coming up, which are going to be Living Environment, which is going to all have two changes, and you will have, also see Earth Science coming up. So this is just really the notification of the standards that are being changed and shifted from Common Core to Next Gen.
So this revision is to comply with the New York State standards as a district?
Yes, yeah. It's just this, this is the year, the rollover. Our kids have been up to this point have gotten the Next Gen standards, and so now, as they move up through the grades, it's just that natural progression.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Not totally pertinent, maybe, but it's a little disappointing that the state has scheduled the brand-new Algebra I regions for tomorrow. They scheduled it early versus later, so that means the teachers have less prep time. I'm not sure why.
It's typical anytime there's a new administration for any type of region's exam or state assessment, they do their analysis so that they can come up with the appropriate cut scores or scale and score based on student performance. So they need the results entered in sooner rather than later, so that by the end of school, they have the ability to come out with a reading scale. And that's typical. You're going to see next year, there's the same science and other exams. We had US history, global studies previous years.
And we have plenty of notification on when those regions get the marks, so.
We do, I believe they're on the school calendar.
Okay, so that's, that's.
I was just wondering, um, if anybody else has been interested in this besides me, that you were asking for feedback on topics for the retreat, and I don't know if you've had this already, but just understanding, you know, the transition from Common Core to Next Gen, I thought might be really interesting for us and how we're preparing for that.
That might be a good one for, kind of in tandem with the, um, the, the change to the literacy approach, we could do that all in one evening.
Thank you.
Yeah, so all of the Derby students will be taking the exam at the high school because of the construction and the lack of space this morning.
Okay, we have a motion on the table, and maybe I got us off a little bit, I apologize. If there's no further discussion, proceed to vote. Those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And now, uh, time for our roundtable. And the first item is universal pre-K, which Luke and I tried to steal earlier, but guess, Dr. Barbara, you can have it now.
Will Mrs. Burnett pull up the data? Uh, just something positive to celebrate, when you look at the number of students when we started this program, and during the 2021, '22 school year, halfway through, we started from Jan, uh, end of January through June, we had 58 students participating in four classrooms across the district. We received a grant allocation of just about under $675,000. 118 students participated, and now, as alluded to, we're excited that we'll have 250 students in next year's program currently registered, participating in 14 classrooms, 12 in the district and two in outside of the YMCA Little Luchs and those partnerships, which we will approve those partnerships at the July 1 meeting, the formal agreements. Uh, it's, it's great that we have a community partner, we're able to get a little bit more funding from the state when we do have the community partner, but that's not the reason why we do that. The reason why we're, um, working with the YMCA Little Luchs is that it does allow us, it allows them to continue the relationship they built with some families who have chosen to go that route, and allows for more wraparound services and support for those students, which I think is certainly, um, important when you think about childcare before and after school, because not everyone can get into the programs that we have here, um, because we don't offer really those before and after school as a part of the UPK. So definitely exciting, and, uh, we'll see that, you know, it'll continue to hopefully grow, and as mentioned before, with future construction projects and adjustments in our schools, potentially with reconfiguration, we'll create more opportunities by freeing up additional classrooms. As you can see, we have a total allocation for a maximum of 320 students, we're losing 250, uh, so there is definitely room to continue to expand as space becomes available and/or partnerships.
The constraint right now with the, the facility space constraint?
Correct. Are there any UK questions?
Are there a lot of students on a waiting list where they can't be accommodated?
So right now, we are good. Um, the last few years, we did have, and I would anticipate, there's, there's still a few seats left, we can have, um, looks like there's a few, a few seats still, uh, open, um, but as people fluctuate, I mean, we have some flexibility, they do go on a waitlist, there are students that register and then end up moving, there is a fair amount of change between now and the start of the school year, so we have flexibility. Thankfully, we did not have to worry about a lottery, which we have had in recent prior years, uh, so we are in a very good place. I think, you said this, I think, period. Um, we would be able to have up to 320 students if we had the facilities for them, is that correct? Correct.
Okay. Any other thoughts on that, or again? Great, great to have 250 out of, I suppose, a potential class of 400, 420, something. So we're deserving a lot of those students, but there's a few, few more that could be possible. And then the, if you're ready for the second item, it's the resolution, and remember some of our discussion earlier, was that in terms of building aid, uh, to get, sorry?
Just want to make sure I was clicking on the right one.
Okay. Um, in terms of building aid, the way New York State works currently is you can get building capital improvement aid every five years. However, you can't build a new building because you cannot show an equivalency of aid to the cost of building a new building. What is happening, though, and we are experiencing it in buildings that are, what, over 65 years old, approaching 70 years old, is because the buildings are so old, what we're in essence doing is throwing good money into bad buildings. And should we try to build a new building, the aid is significantly less, and it would be, would be unfair to the community almost to do something. Well, that really is a flawed approach, because not only us, but I know there's a school in Binghamton that I talked to Mike Schuster about, that he says is unfit for students. However, they've tried to build a new one, and the state won't aid it under them. So the, the philosophy in terms of aiding only for improvements, not for building new, is, is just not going to continue to work. And in the long run, if you build a new building versus continuing to rehab 70-year-old buildings, you're going to have a cost savings over, I don't know, it's 20 or 30 years, and you're going to have better space for students, you're going to have more efficient space, so we just, we're urging with this proposal of New York State to change, to alter their approach. And you can see, I think, Schuster helped write this, so he's gotten into the technical terms of, you know, every, instead of looking at every five years, you need to look at a 20- or 30-year increment, if you can read that, but, um, just that, that's up for discussion, uh, I guess we'll decide in July whether we really want to do this.
So if you would like us to make updates and adjustments to what's being proposed, we can certainly do that through discussion this evening, or if you're okay with it, we can put it on the agenda for the reord meeting to formally adopt this, to submit to NISBA, and Tiffany will do that following board action. Can't do it without you saying yes, or we support this proposal, so.
I think we've had a good discussion about this, and I think it's something that needs to be addressed with the state level, so I think we should be following with it personally.
So I'm not going to, I'm not going to say what it was, um, so I'll just chop down the part where I'm guilty. I haven't read through this, but, you know, kind of nuts and bolts, and I should have, I'm going to, I'm wondering if there's any, for all of you who actually have done your own work, I apologize. So some of this comes down to definitions of what is new deal, and right now, that definition, definition is constrained by footprint, taken through some of the state regulations, some of the state codes and things like that. Is there anything in here that, that considers changing some of the definitions of existing, the definitions that sort of categorize existing structures? Because that might be a way to, to, to find a softer entry into this.
There's not, um, I mean, I think what you see here is just, you know, black and white with replace one school with new school, which is still going to be ultimately more cost-effective in the long run. Um, the way that the formulas currently work, certainly Tiffany can add to this if we needed, you know, there's no incentive to do any type of addition or new, it's really renovations, I mean, that's, think about what we're doing with the pool. You know, we're renovating, renovating a gym to create a new pool because adding on a new pool is just not, is not feasible with the way that things work currently. So I think what we're trying to do is say, we need new schools for at least the two most aged buildings, Van Buren and Alvin, and this is what we're trying to get them to, to change.
It was actually the pool that caused me to look up some of that stuff, and that's why I was wondering about, you know, how we present this, but that you agree?
Yeah, I guess I just said two things. One question was, has something like this been proposed through the NISBA channels before from other districts or in the future?
So my understanding is there's some different, um, proposals out there from NISBA that may not be specific to a new school, but just how they aid new construction, um, whether it be additions to buildings, because that's considered new, not the renovation, but I don't know that there's been anything specific recently about a new school, which I think there are more and more schools across the state that are finding themselves in the type of situation that, that we may be in soon, based on roofs, you know, just other infrastructure related to those aging buildings.
Uh, we talked a little bit with NISBA about a couple of people there, and evidently they have a proposal, I believe, to allow full capital reimbursement on additions, is kind of what theirs is looking at. However, the one point here they would miss is that being able to build a new school will allow you to build a school closer to where your population growth is. I think we all know that some of the schools in Bolwensville I think we all know that some of the schools in Bollesville were not located, years ago they thought they were located, and it turns out population growth is in different places. So now, if you needed a school, you know, five miles away or whatever, you could do it. Which the NISBA proposal did not progress that.
Yeah, it's a board, and I think definitely, and you said we should talk about it and put the new proposal forward, because I know from previous facility committee meetings, we talked about with our two aging elementary schools, A, to renovate the entire school would be much more costly to the community, and you're still limited by aging beams, wood versus steel. And the, it is, you won't get the cost to renovate that without tearing the structure down. And for the community standpoint, the taxpayer's standpoint, it'd be cheaper over 30 years to build a brand-new building than to renovate an existing one that actually prohibits certain types of expansion just for structural safety. And the point you brought in, I think, is also equally important, is when the schools were built 60, 70 years ago, the community's footprint was vastly different. So again, from a taxpayer's point of view, you may be able to have significant cost savings building new in a different location that not only will save on the building, but the bus saying transportation's time, students on a bus. So I think that if we really hit those key points and we put together a good proposition, I, I would anticipate other districts throughout the state would be equally supportive.
The big issue is going to be that right now, the state is doling out, what, 30 and 50 and 60 million dollar renovations, or in this case, they'd have to dole out 180 million new build. So that's going to be probably the sticking point. But again, it's going to be better long-term and more efficient, so. Well, any more discussion on that? No? Okay, so eleven.
I'm sorry. If, if we want to suggest ideas for this, who, before that's made, July 8, Dr.?
Idea votes. Anyone, just private, Jen Plank?
Okay, ready for, resolved board of education enter to, enter into executive session for the purpose of collecting collective negotiations pursuant to the table of law to discuss the Bollesville substitute teachers association contract, employment history of a particular person, and proposed acquisition, sale, or lease of real property.
Sure.
On Jeremy. Don't expect much discussion here. I will move to vote then. Those in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. So five minutes and we'll move to executive. Thank you.